Good evening and welcome to the Enrollment and Facility Study Commission. It is February 26, 2019. Let's start with introductions of the commission members, and we'll start this time over on my left.
Jen Cooper, parent, BHP, ATEC at Bayside, representing ATECs.
Sue Olafson, I'm president of the Portland Education Association, which is the teachers' union in the district.
Marnie Morioni, I am the Board of Education, representing District Five.
Sarah Thompson, School Board at Large.
Ben Grant, I'm a parent of two kids at Ocean Ave Elementary, and a community representative.
Javier Botana, Superintendent.
Peter Eglington, Community Member, parent, former school board chair, and former Chief Operations Officer for Portland Public Schools.
Christopher Dana, Community Member and long fellow parent.
Caitlin Leclair, Principal of King Middle School, and Representative of Portland Administrators.
Sheila Jepson, Principal at Portland High School, representing Portland Administrators.
Cheryl Crowley, Parent, and representing Island Communities.
And just a note, we typically have two city councilors on the commission. Tonight, there happens to be a Health and Human Services and Public Safety Committee meeting, which is always important, but tonight, it may be even more important. They'll be discussing the earned paid sick leave policy and the homeless services center issue. And so, Councilor Ali and Councilor Cook could not be here tonight. And fortunately, we are recording tonight's public comments, so they'll have a chance to review those before we deliberate on our final recommendation. So I wanted to make sure I shared that with everybody. Well, welcome to the public who are here. This is an opportunity for us to listen to you. I'm not going to speak much, and we're not going to speak at all as a group. We will be taking in your comments and questions and bringing it to a meeting scheduled for next week. I don't have the specific date yet, but scheduled for next week where we will have our final deliberation and vote. So tonight, those who wish to speak on the preliminary recommendation that we made at our last meeting, you'll have an opportunity to come up to the podium, and I would ask that you try to limit your comments to about three minutes, which is how the school board generally operates. I believe, at least online, if not in the back, we have what we, well, I can't say "we" anymore, but the school board uses as guidelines for public hearings. And I wanted to read through those in case there aren't any copies, so that everybody is on the same page. Any person wishing to address the committee shall be recognized by me. You can come forward to the microphone, state your name and your address before speaking. Please direct all comments and questions to me as the chair, rather than to individual commission members. If you have a lot to say and you're going beyond three minutes, I will indicate, and you can ask for an extension if necessary, but, and I don't anticipate we will have to hold folks to strictly three minutes, given the number of people here, but please be courteous of your fellow public folks here. And I think that'll be the only one guidelines that I will mention. The other thing that I will say is that, remind folks, is that tonight isn't, unfortunately, a chance for dialogue. We will record, if you have a question, we'll record it and make sure that we answer it at our next meeting, as well as in our report to the board. I would also ask that you all refrain from applause or the opposite of applause. I don't know what, how else to capture that, but...
Hissing, booing.
Booing, hissing. This is an opportunity for everyone who wishes to speak to be able to do so in a respectful environment. So, I don't know if there's anything else that I've forgotten from the board days, but those are some of the key ones that I wanted to represent. So, thank you all for coming. The commission was created by the school board, and we started meeting in October. Our charge has been to look at enrollment data, look at facility use, specifically the schools, also to consider the comments that the public provided during a series of public forums back in the fall, or late summer, as well as the results of survey that was conducted with the public. We are focused specifically on how to reduce costs. Back in the fall, we, the district was projecting that they might be facing a $2 to $4 million shortfall in funding, as well as increased costs in the district, which would have exceeded a 2.5% tax increase if it were to have happened. And so, the concern was, particularly given the experience in other budget years, that the board needed additional information, both from experts, as well as community and staff, on places to look. And so, we set out to review all of the information and to brainstorm on the various options that were academically feasible, and all of the options that we looked at are models that are used in other districts, maybe not the ones directly surrounding ours, but elsewhere in the U.S. And we posed that to the consultants, and they came back with an analysis of what the cost savings could be from each option, and we deliberated at our last meeting, both in small groups and then as a larger body, on where we felt comfortable and not comfortable in recommending options to the school board. I should mention that we are only advisory. We will be presenting the results of our final meeting to the board, and they are the ultimate decision-makers. And so, they may continue to research options, they may approve whatever our final recommendation is, they could pick another one that we decided against, or they could pick something brand-new, or nothing at all. So, the process is not complete with the end of our work. It'll go to them for further deliberation, and I'm sure additional opportunities for public comment. So, that's all. Background and context, we did end up looking at five options, all of which would involve change and potential disruption to one community or another within Portland. And so, it was difficult, but we were focused on our charge, which was to identify options, one or more options. And we ultimately decided to put forward for public comment, an option that would consolidate grades 10 through 12 in a single high school, and maintain Casco Bay High School in its current configuration. So, we'd go from three high schools to two. We would use the other high school for a 7 through 9 junior high. We would use two of the middle schools for grades 5 through 6, or you might consider that at an upper elementary level. The existing elementary schools would become pre-K through 4. Now, because 5th graders would be moved to a 5th, 6th upper elementary school, that would create space at the elementary school, particularly if the board chooses to expand pre-K. It would provide additional space for that to happen. And then, all those changes would leave one middle school that would be available for other uses. So, those other uses could be central office, could be Portland Adult Ed if it was appropriate, and/or the Bayside program, which is already in the planning stages for relocation, regardless of what our decision is. But that space would become available for other purposes within the district. If Portland Adult Ed was moved to that middle school, it would obviously free up the building that they're currently in, for which the district is paying rent. And so, it would save some funds directly that way. The other options that we looked at either didn't save very much, at least compared to our preliminary option, which is projected to save on the order of $2.8 million. So, the other ones either didn't save very much, or actually cost money, which was not going to be an option for us, particularly given the potential disruptions that would be entailed. So, the other options were more in the $1 to $2 million range, with one that would cost money, and one that was as little as $763,000. So, we decided as a board to put forward just that single option, which is option number two in the materials that you may have seen, and to consider the other four options as not worth considering. It's important to note that those who were here for our deliberation felt that it was important to, particularly after learning of additional funds that are anticipated from the state, not guaranteed, that the recommendation was one of consider if necessary, and recognizing that we're not the ones that can decide whether it's necessary or not. That's going to be more in the hands of the superintendent and the school board, and in their deliberations with the city council. So, we didn't want to put forward a recommendation that said that these changes are warranted now, and we also wanted to recognize that it could take some time if that option was chosen to actually implement. So, I'll just take a quick look around to see if I've missed anything major. All right, great. And with that, I will open up for public comment, and once again, if you would like to speak, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and try to keep your comments to three minutes, or thereabouts.
My name is Christine Brusseras, and I live at 35 St. Lawrence Street in Portland. I've taught earth science to 9th graders for 30 years at Portland High, and I have two children that currently are currently attending Portland High. The proposed consolidation plan, or option number two, is deeply flawed for a number of reasons. It focuses on the use of space and capacity for each building, but completely ignores what makes schools really work, that is, a sense of community and belonging. Portland High has been an integral part of the community since 1821, welcoming families from Portland neighborhoods and the world beyond. Over many years, we've worked hard to provide an excellent education to an economically and ethnically diverse group of students, and we've successfully prepared them for post-secondary education and the rigors of college, where they enjoy an excellent retention rate. Our test scores are currently the highest in the district, and we've created a highly personalized and vibrant culture of learning in an orderly building. Option number two would ruin the sense of place and academic rigor that we've worked so hard to cultivate, all for a one-time savings. And why do Deering and Portland have to be shuffled like a deck of cards while Casco Bay remains untouched? This is a grade 9 through 12 school best for them, but not for us? That seems utterly unfair and insulting to our two historic and respected comprehensive schools. The Portland Promise claims to value equity. This doesn't sound like equity to me. It smacks of favoritism. A 10 through 12 grade high school is simply a bad idea. Any middle school teacher can tell you that most 8th graders are chomping at the bit to get to high school. Imagine how 9th graders would feel if they had to delay the big move yet one more year. Is it a wise idea for 12-year-olds to attend school with 15-year-olds? Most schools changed over to a 9 through 12 model decades ago for this reason. Keeping 9th grade in middle school, or would it be called junior high school again? Seems like delaying development and sacrificing readiness for high school one more year. Would we count 9th grade as a high school year, as most colleges require? How would we deal with extracurriculars like sports, theater, and music that often motivate many kids to perform better in school? Would they play for high school teams where they're not yet part of the school and know almost no one? We know personalization is the key component to student success. This plan would work against personalization. We would be a pariah in our own state, creating unnecessary chaos for students, teachers, and coaches. Indeed, this proposal would call into question the value of a Portland public school's education. I've already heard parents talk about shepherds, Wayne Fleet, or perhaps a move to the suburbs as an alternative to this poorly devised plan. Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Bill Weber. My wife and I live in North Deering. We have two sons that have gone through the public Portland school system, and recently graduated from Portland High. I think it's important to recognize and restate the reason for this commission. Two of our largest buildings are 40 to 60% occupied. That's unacceptable. I've been involved in the environmental field for over 40 years. We have a term that's called the triple bottom line in terms of sustainability. And what that means is that in order to be more effective and more efficient, you can reduce your costs, as well as significantly reduce your greenhouse gases. The city has made a major commitment to reducing the carbon footprint of the city building. So, this is an opportunity, not a problem, but an opportunity to make significant changes in reducing our carbon footprint. The other part of that triple bottom line is, I believe that by combining the two schools, the two high schools, you'll give more opportunity to an advanced curriculum. When my sons went through Portland High, they were able to take the AP for All program, which is an online program, and the reason why they had to take that is because there weren't enough kids in their class. Very difficult to take chemistry online, a laboratory online. That's very difficult. So, again, I think the city is committed to reducing the carbon footprint, and I think two of the largest buildings in the district are only 50% occupied. So I think that's the opportunity to reduce costs. Thank you.
My name is Johanna Burden, and I live at 26 May Street. I'm a proud parent to a 9th grade Portland High student, proud Portland taxpayer, and proud to work at Portland High as a school counselor. I am here to ask the commission not to move forward with a recommendation for option two. I respectfully request that the commission or school board share the most likely plans of any actual rearrangement and closure of schools, and proposed faculty cuts prior to the school board making a decision on such important matter. I don't think parents, staff, or community members have enough information to respond to option two with anything but a resounding "no." I would like to further say that I think a lot of parents potentially didn't understand the import of this meeting, and that it would be important to more, to publicize better future events like this. As a community, we voted to keep our many neighborhood elementary schools by voting for funding for renovations. I believe we would choose to keep and pay for our middle schools and high schools. If smaller schools are good for our younger students, having a very large middle school or junior high, and a very large 10 to 12 high school does not make any sense just a few years later. In addition to comments already made or about to be made by others, I am concerned about access for students to extracurricular activities and athletic competition at the high school level and middle school levels under this plan. I believe there are likely increases in busing, with no budget articulated because of the avoidance of saying which building would close, and where the mega high school and mega junior highs would be located. Has there been a change in philosophy for what middle schoolers need that supports a move to a junior high model? I am supportive of pre-K for us as a district, and understand why it is critically important for low-income students. Yes, please pay all of those pre-K teachers on the same scale as other Portland teachers. With that said, I ask us not to promote a long-term positive change for our younger low-income districts, students in the district, in trade for very large junior highs and high schools that I so far believe will reduce opportunities and chances for success for those same low-income students when they become older. Speaking of equity and other parts of the Portland Promise around achievement, the whole student, and people, how does option two support any of these? Could answers to this question please be articulated prior to a board decision? Lastly, if a decision is ever made to implement high school consolidation in particular, I ask the committee and the school board not to single out a favorite high school in Casco Bay High School, for no changes, while requiring great change of the students and staff at the others. There is no data to support such favoritism, and thank you.
My name is Erica Lee Winship, and I live at 26 Fall Lane. I've been a teacher at Portland High School for the past 21 years, and I'm currently the parent of a freshman at Portland High and a 7th grader at Lyman Moore Middle School. Some of my colleagues have stolen some of my thunder, but I'll try to avoid being redundant. First, I'd just like to say thank you for your time and effort in serving on this commission. I know you've been very thoughtful in your process, and I truly appreciate your willingness to serve, but tonight, I'm urging you not to recommend option two to the school board. Over vacation, I was watching the movie Sully with my family, and it struck me that the work the consultants have done here is much like the major blunder the NTSB made when investigating the crash landing into the Hudson 10 years ago. In the film, the pilot Chesley Sullenberger has to remind the experts on the NTSB that all of their computer simulations, which showed he could have safely landed at LaGuardia, are incorrect because none of them took into account the human factor in making a life and death decision for all the people onboard that plane. I'm afraid the consultants you have paid might have done the same thing. They came up with a scheme to save a few bucks, but clearly, none of these so-called experts live in Portland, send their kids to school in Portland, or teach the children of Portland. So let me point out how option two, in my opinion, ignores the human factor, which is arguably the most important to consider in the business of education. This option has students transitioning to a new school three times after elementary school, with students staying in no place longer than three years. Anyone here can tell you that is too short of a time period. Adjusting to new school environments is hard on families and labor-intensive for school personnel. These newly-proposed mega schools will feel impersonal, and there will barely be enough time for staff to get to know students and families before they are off to the next school. There will also be fewer opportunities for students to participate in extracurricular activities, as you consolidate from three middle schools to one mega junior high. Lasting relationships, PTO groups, community engagement, and the general community feel that our schools currently have will suffer. These are essential to strong schools, and this plan promises to erode the community building that I believe currently takes place in our elementary, middle, and high schools. Also, much of this model seems to rest on the idea that space is all that is necessary for learning. The consultants assumed that my classroom is not used during my free period. The consultants failed to consider the students who come to my room for extra help, or who need to make up work during that time, or the setup that takes place for class activities I planned for later in the day, or that I decorate my room with materials to make kids feel welcome and to help support their learning. Sometimes, my colleagues just stop by at event because they're having a bad day, and sometimes I even just lock my door for a minute of peace and quiet during my free period, so that I can mentally regroup and be prepared for the next group of kids who walk through that door and need my full attention. So, the floor models the consultants used in their conclusions about open space predict that I could do my job in any generic space with the same outcome, just like the NTSB simulations predicted Sully should have landed that plane safely at LaGuardia. Well, guess what? They're wrong. Students will have less access to teachers in this model at the middle and high school levels, and teachers will have unsatisfactory working conditions. Another human factor not really addressed by this plan is the merging of two storied high schools in the city. Which school closes? What mascot will we use? What will the schedule be? I mean, you know, the list goes on and on. I think that it will be a logistical and emotional nightmare for this community. People here are fiercely dedicated to Portland and Deering High, and none of us want to live through that consolidation process. I truly believe the toll this process takes would create wounds in this community that could take generations to heal. My colleagues have already mentioned this, but I also think another way this recommendation fails to address the human element is the fate of Casco Bay. I mean no disrespect to the families and staff at Casco Bay, and I truly mean it when I say that my colleagues there are top-notch, and I respect the work that they do. But you can't really think it's okay to leave one school untouched in this plan while every other school gets turned upside down. Leaving Casco Bay untouched, in my opinion, is egregious. This decision indicates that they're the golden child of the district, and it's not fair to the 1,700 students who've chosen to go to Portland or Deering. It's not fair, and as Christine said, I think it's insulting. It's also impractical and illogical to send some kids off to high school in 9th grade and tell the rest that they have to wait until 10th. The thought of my daughter being sort of stuck in this mega junior high until 10th grade frankly makes me consider private school options. Speaking of my kids, today's generation of students have been through reform after reform. I've had many conversations with Ben Donaldson and others about this. No Chad Left Behind, Race to the Top, The Common Core, the constant changing of the math program, whatever that means, multiple versions and iterations of standardized tests, proficiency-based grading, the list goes on and on. It's like our hair is always on fire. Humans, especially children, need predictability, stability, and continuity to thrive. Opening multiple new schools and completely reorganizing the way we educate is sure to have a negative impact on the first students to experience this transition. I think I speak for a lot of parents in the city when I say, "No, thank you." In closing, I urge you to remember that schools are about nurturing and developing human beings, and about fostering a sense of community and identity in the next generation of citizens. The human factor truly matters, and no monetary value can be assigned to it. So please do the right thing and take option two off the table. Thank you.
It's always so nerve-wracking up here. It's fantastic. Good evening. My name is David Hopkinson of 9 Grafton Street. Thank you all very much for the time and effort that you've put in to this commission. It hit me the other day what a great position you're actually in. There was a revenue problem that helped create this long overdue process, and then recently, the revenue problem dried up, of which I believe a few of you were privy to a bit ago due to your political careers. At least one of you were listed by name as a person the school board wanted on this blind pick commission, and you know what? It worked. There is enough power on this commission to really carry some political weight. As a parent of the always threatened to be closed Presum Scott School, taxpayer, homeowner, voter, and overall good guy, I welcomed the study, well knowing that once tested, this school would stand on its own. It did, it will continue to, even if you consider the trailer with no running water as part of the school building, it's within tolerance. I know you are all aware of the four-school bond overwhelmingly passed a few years ago. Some of you campaigned for it, many of you voted for it. Yet, you are proposing an idea that goes against the will of the people. Your proposal changes elementary schools to pre-K to 4th grade. This was not the intent of the voters when they took into their hands the lack of property maintenance and management coming from the district and the state. We, you, told the school board and the city council that you wanted those schools fixed, as-is. Then we, you, as the true individuals in charge of our society... Didn't hint at it, said it. Elected and appointed officials have, here in Portland, told voters that their ballot does not matter, their ballot does not matter, that government does not have to do what the people deemed appropriate and agreed on. Yes, this is not an unconstitutional wall by a pumpkin or access to Medicare being denied by an egomaniac. This is just the school budget for a city of 65,000 people. But again, many of you are involved in politics at different levels or at least engaged enough to be considered for this commission, and you have proposed a scenario on your own that goes against the morality intent and intent of a democratic process. So, do not recommend anything. You don't have to. You're not required to find a solution. A solution to a budget run by 80% people costs will not be found by focusing on the 20-odd percent that is facilities. You would need to remove the math program to make that work. Instead, stop this dead in its tracks, stand up for your rights. Just because the finances aren't as dire does not mean we have prioritized education. Finances will be tight again and will be back here, figuring out how we can change the will of the voters to make some numbers work instead of focusing on the revenue problem that got us here in the first place. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Glenys Omara. I live at 29 Lanav. I'm a junior at Deering High School, and I'm here to talk about the proposal to move ninth graders out of the high schools and into the middle schools. I should state for the record, I really love Deering, go Rams, and so I do subscribe to this like friendly cross-city rivalry we've got with Portland, and I don't want to combine the two schools, but like as you can tell, I'm a little bit biased and so I'm not here to talk about that. What I do want to talk about is three opportunities for ninth graders I feel like they'll lose if they're not attending high school. The first is in the range of classes that are available at high school. At Deering, I have a friend who took a year-long Algebra I math class, and because she was in a class that was moving at her speed and her ability, she saw her math skills drastically improve. And I have another friend who, as a freshman, took AP Statistics and then in May got a great score in the AP test and at 15 had already earned college credit. And because students are able to take classes with people from different grades, there will always be a larger range of classes available to them at a high school than there will be at a middle school. So by keeping ninth graders in high school, you're depriving them of a really large choice of classes, a range of classes that will fit their speed, their ability, where they want to go with life. The second missed opportunity is in extracurriculars. The compendium of reconfiguration options you made available online notes that there could be potential problems with freshman sports, but I want to go further. I want to talk about other academic clubs that are also really important to ninth through 12th graders, and specifically speech and debate, which has a really important place in my heart. The school board last year actually invited me and my debate partner to be recognized because we had done so well in speech and debate. We won the state tournament and qualified for both national debate tournaments, and I was a sophomore at the time. That would not have been possible if I hadn't been able to do debate when I was a freshman, if I hadn't been able to grow from the seniors and juniors who I knew as a freshman. So all of those doors that debate has opened up to me and all of the successes that I've had with it is because of the long time I've been able to work with my team. And I want you to remember that sports aren't the only thing on the line. If you take away a year of high school, you're taking away a year of debate, a year of Model UN, a year of volunteering in the Key Club, a year of Black Student Union, all of these clubs which are bigger and more serious and better funded at the high school level than they are at the middle school level, and that students are able to engage in for four full years if they are able to attend a high school. This year, we actually had a freshman student qualify for Nationals, and I'm really looking forward to sharing, like being her roommate when we go to Nationals in Milwaukee. I don't want you to take away that big chunk of my team that I love spending time with. And the third missed opportunity, I think, is developmental. As I just talked about, I spend a lot of time with freshmen in debate. I'm not on any sports teams, but I know people like really bond with freshmen on sports teams. In these classes, in these advanced classes that freshmen are able to take, even just in the hallways, they're spending time with older students who help them grow and mature. They get rides with older teammates to team dinners and they get to watch their older classmates go through the college process, and it helps them, and they also have people to turn to who have more experience and more perspective. I know I really looked to older students when I was a freshman, and I know multiple freshmen are now able to confide in me and turn to me for advice, which is an experience that I really love. Ninth graders also have four years rather than three to prepare for applying to college, which is this huge step in their life, and I feel like they need those four years to take opportunities and maybe make mistakes rather than in three years when those mistakes could become much more serious. Trust me, as a junior, I've been in high school for three years. Three years is not enough to prepare me to go to college. So I ask you to remember that any solution to these problems that involves busing ninth graders to the high school only serves to prove that ninth graders belong in a high school to begin with. And I ask you to see us as students, as individuals who have all of these opportunities we can enjoy and we can grow from, rather than a list of expenditures, I ask you to remember that what you're weighing here, which is like human potential against money saved. So thank you so much for letting me speak, and I really strongly stand against option two.
And I'm Tess Conroy.
We are freshmen at Portland High School currently.
The current plan has Casco Bay High School keeping their freshmen, while the other high schools would be 10 to 12. It's not fair that they would get to stay while the others would be demoted to a middle school level.
The rest of the ninth graders should be treated just as special as Casco Bay because they are just as special. And I personally could not imagine another long year in middle school. I think that it's very unfair that Casco Bay is the only school that's going without a change. Thank you.
Hi, I am Morgan Beals, and like Glenys, I am a senior at Deering High School. I live at 11 Day Street in Westbrook. I chose to stay at Deering because it has a great sense of community, and I chose Deering because I liked how they taught, and I'm worried that if we were to combine schools that it would be like a whole different, like, teaching style. And I feel like it's really important for students going into high school to be able to have that choice. I also think it's really important to fully understand some of the concerns that people may have if the proposed budget does fail. And I understand that if Portland's public schools do not have enough money to, in their budget, to sustain multiple schools, that they may have to make budget cuts somewhere. If we were to look to option two, it tells us that there would be only two high schools, which would be Portland and Casco Bay, and one junior high school, which would be at Deering. I would also like to point out that option two is saying that ninth graders will no longer be part of the high school and we move to junior high, to the junior high school. At first, this proposal sounds fine, but I'd like to point out that Portland is in fact smaller than Deering, and if you were to walk in the hallways of Deering right now, yes, there are freshmen there and the freshmen wouldn't be there, but right now, it's really hard to walk in between classes. Yes, with option two, we wouldn't have freshmen anymore, but that doesn't change the fact that there's simply not enough room to have both high schools combined with 10 through 12 in one school. I think we should take the time to consider making renovations, maybe if we have room in that budget, and make one of the schools bigger rather than rushing into a solution that might not benefit everyone. It also doesn't make sense to me that Casco Bay would still be accepting freshmen into their school, and there wouldn't have a junior, and ninth graders would have to either choose a junior high school or a regular high school at Casco Bay. And another concern that I would have is would the ninth graders who do go to that junior high school still be allowed to participate in freshman sports clubs and other extracurriculars? I think before we make drastic decisions, we really need to think about who we're benefiting, and I really think we need to focus on trying to have the best outcomes for students at Portland Public Schools. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jane Willehan. I'm a Portland community member. I live at 185 Craigie Street. I've spent approximately 18 years as a parent in the community, six, seven years teaching in the Portland District. Before that, I spent 15 years of my life, well, 20 years of my life in business. If we're talking about business, if we're talking about warehousing and widgets, I'm your girl. Okay? Let's just build one ginormous school. Let's have, I don't know, 50 or 60 kids in each school, each classroom, and see how we do. Then if it doesn't go well, we'll have a quality control department, we'll then adjust in six weeks. That's a business model if you're making widgets. The business we are in is the business of education. I would love to know what educational model we're talking about. We changed away, I went to a junior high, the place in Portland, quite honestly, I was terrified most of the time, a tremendous amount of drugs. That was maybe, I guess, 30 years ago. Are we in favor of a junior high model or a middle school model? They're very different models of education. I noticed that suddenly one of our excellent middle schools, thought to be one of the best around the country, simply disappears in King Middle School. If we believe in educational, in EL education at all, it started with middle school, it went to the high school, now we've lost the middle school play into that. So I guess we'd have it still at Presumscott, skip the middle school years, and move on to high school. We have twice as many transitions for kids. We have a K, a pre-K four, five, six is a tough time to change. I know at King, I never felt like I knew parents as well or teachers as well as I did in a five-year, six-year model of elementary. Now we're going to have two-year models. We're going to switch them again in sixth through eighth grade? No. I can't even keep track of it. Five, six, seventh and eighth? No. Seven through nine? Seven, eight, nine? Anyway, I just would like to know what educational philosophy is behind this. Does it, does it help with equity? Does it help with achievement? I don't think so. The other thing that clearly we're going to do is move one group of kids away from their neighborhood school. I'm a huge believer and promoter of neighborhood schools. Probably it will come from where our least affluent kids are. That's what happened when we moved where Nathan Clifford was in favor of a different part of town. My guess is King will become central office. Those kids can all walk to school. The busing increase in costs, has anyone really done a good bullet point on it? How many more hours a day are kids going to be on a bus? Talk about fourth graders, most of them walk right now, fifth graders, adding an hour to their day? Again, what educational philosophy are we going with? We're in the business of education, not the business of business. If you need more room, let's look at, you know, do we have room for Portland Adult Ed? Maybe at Portland High. I don't know. But I just don't think that we do this at the expense of our students.
I didn't have time to print this. I'm Sarah Obary. I work at Portland High School. My job specifically is around supporting the transition from eighth to ninth grade, so I know a lot about that transition part. My children attend Lincoln Middle School and Row Elementary School, and I'd make a note that I do not live in Portland, but I choose to send my student, my children to Portland Public Schools. I've asked a lot of students, both middle and high school students, about this option two. They've expressed fear of increased student conflicts, decreased opportunities in sports and extracurricular activities, and decreased personal connections. I told these students that at one point, Deering and Portland had a lot more students in their buildings. They reminded me that they're not the same students that were the students of the past, and they asked me, "Did they even have social media back then?" Every student has expressed concern about the negative impact on culture and climate of having one large 10 through 12 high school and one large 7 through 9 junior high school. How large are we talking? The current middle school average is just under 500 students for grades six through eight. The proposed option two would put 7 through 9 together in one school building, and if you use next year's numbers, that would be a school size of just under 1,400 students. Currently, the two large comprehensive schools have approximately 800 to 900 students. The new model would house approximately 1,300 high school students in one building. I've worked in large public schools in Baltimore, Maryland, and across the state of Maine, and my instincts say that increasing school size negatively impacts students, but being the person I am, I looked to research to see if I was correct. My beliefs was that smaller middle schools and high schools are better for learning, smaller middle and high schools mean safer schools, and I believe disadvantaged youth are better served by smaller schools. The U.S. Department of Education says the following. "The size of high schools may have an indirect effect on student learning. Essentially, more moderately sized schools, those with fewer than 900 or fewer students, likely improve the climate and conditions for student success." Additionally, a study by Lee and Julia B. Smith, University of Rochester Assistant Professor, based on nearly 10,000 high school students, says that the ideal school size for learning is 600 to 900 students. This is also concluded by the National Clearinghouse for Education Facilities. Before I tell you more research, I'd like to give credit to Suzie Nick, our librarian, for helping me with this research. That same study goes on to say, "Size seems to matter more for some students than other. Size is essentially important in schools attended by the most disadvantaged students. In schools enrolling larger numbers on minority and low-income students, learning falls off sharply as the schools become larger or smaller than that ideal number, 600 to 900." The U.S. Department of Education also says, "Smaller schools also may be safer because students feel less alienated, more nurtured, and more connected to caring adults, and teachers feel that they have more opportunity to get to know and support students." A 2003 report by Janet Fairman comparing small and large school strength says, "School climate and safety studies comparing small and large schools have generally found less crime, violence, theft, and fighting in smaller schools. In an era of escalating incidence of school violence, sometimes even in early grades, it is important to structure our schools and classrooms in ways that increase opportunities for children to develop trusting relationships with caring adults, and that allows educators the chance to get to know students and become aware of potential problems." The U.S. Department of Education also says, "While smaller schools have a higher cost per pupil than larger schools, they have a lower cost per graduate since they tend to have lower dropout rates. Also, the higher percentage of dropouts from larger school carries additional societal costs. I ask that you consider the impact of this option, which significantly increases the size of our middle and high schools, on student learning, especially for disadvantaged youth, as well as its potential negative impact on school safety. I believe smaller middle and high schools are better for learning. I believe smaller middle and high schools mean safer schools, and I believe disadvantaged youth are better served by smaller schools." Thank you.
I live at 339 Ludlow Street in Portland. For a couple decades, I taught at West School. I currently teach at Portland High School. I'm a big fan of expeditionary learning. When my daughter Joanna was in middle school, she went with a group of students from Portland to the other Portland in Oregon, and they were part of an award-winning civil rights group, and it changed the lives of all of those students because of the power of what they were dealing with. So I think that expeditionary learning has to continue, but I think it could be assimilated into one of the two large high schools. With the staff, the teachers and the admin of Casco Bay, I think, could assimilate into either Deering or Portland, and that could be known as the Expeditionary High School of the two large high schools. I think this would work, and I think it would also... I think this would work, and I think it would also allow the ninth grade to stay intact at both Deering and Portland. Thank you.
Hi, John Tibido, 114 Clinton Street. Thank you all for what you've been doing the last few months. Not a lot I can add to what's been said tonight. I think people are pretty thoughtful and articulate. So I'll just say one thing. The dramatic and far-reaching changes of option two, I don't think should be recommended by anybody without a deeply researched and thorough exploration of its implications and effects. So this will be on the record for years to come. This decision matters, so I'd ask you not to make a recommendation that's not on solid ground. A tremendous amount of research would need to be done, I think, before a recommendation like this could be made or should be made. So I'd ask you not to recommend option two, and thank you.
All right. Being an introvert, I just want to make sure I've checked. All right. Thank you so much for coming to speak with us. This was the first opportunity since we've been looking at options to hear from the public, and I'm glad that we have so many of the folks here. The commission is made of 17 members, and I think I quickly counted 11 here. And I'll make sure that the other commission members watch this set of comments before we meet next. Please follow the Portland Public Schools website for the date, and we'll make sure we give enough notice of that. And we'll come back together and talk about what we heard tonight and decide on what to do next. So thank you very much for your time and your engagement, and thank you for your continued work on this commission.
Could I share one? It's not a necessary comment, but it's about our colleagues at Deering High School. Can somebody just clarify that they have parent-teacher conferences tonight? I'm not sure that was shared. Was it shared? I just want to say that you saw a lot of Portland High School teachers up here, and you may have seen just as many Deering High School teachers here, but they have parent-teacher conferences tonight, and it may be a good idea to give them the opportunity to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and the meeting is now adjourned, and we'll transition to the Portland School Board, which is...